Welcome to City Commission Meeting. Please turn off all cell phones during our meeting tonight. First item on the agenda is called at order with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is Proclamations and Presentations. Okay, the first one is Constitution Week. Kimberly Lee, Barb, do you want to come up too? You're welcome too. Kimberly Lee and Barbara Kemp. Whereas September 17, 2017 marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution in the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is fitting improper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document its memorial anniversary in the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2017, as Constitution Week. Would you like to say any words?
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, as Regent of the Captain Jesse Leavenworth, Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, we do appreciate all of the work that you do for the city and recognizing Constitution Week every year that we ask it of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Maddox and Mr. Larry Martin from the United Way. The City of Leavenworth hopes that all its citizens enjoy healthy, productive, and meaningful lives, and the United Way of Leavenworth County advances the common good by creating opportunities for a better life for everyone. And the United Way of Leavenworth County focuses on education, income, and health, which are the building blocks for a good quality of life, because we all win when a child succeeds in school and when families are financially stable and when people are in good health. And it takes every part of the community, individuals, businesses, and organizations to supply the passion, expertise, and resources needed to create lasting change for the better. The United Way, whereas United Way of Leavenworth County kicks off its annual campaign during the months of September and October to unite the community and enhance the lives of those living in Leavenworth, Kansas. Now therefore I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, do hereby proclaim the months of September and October as United Way Months. Do you guys like to say a few words?
Mayor Bowder, thank you so much, and Members of the Commission, we're delighted and thrilled that you continue to recognize United Way and the work that we do on behalf of the community. Thank you very much, and we'll hear from our Chairman.
Remember, although the first two months, September and October, are the official months for the campaign, it's an annual campaign, and we ask the community to get behind us. We're really trying to grow the campaign and make a difference in our community. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, new employees. Matthew Phillips here. Matthew was hired on May 18, 2017, as a police officer. He graduated from Gulf High School and was previously employed as a dispatcher for the Newport Ritchie Police in Florida. Deonte Finney here. Deonte was hired on May 18, 2017, as a police officer. Deonte graduated from Shawnee Mission South High School and was previously employed as a sales associate for the kids locker room. All right, she has a typo on there, sorry. Welcome, Deonte.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nicholas Sanchez here. Nope, he's absent, but he was hired on June 15, 2017, as a firefighter. Wendy Hall. Wendy Hall was hired on August 10, 2017, as an administrative clerk for the street department. She graduated from Greenville Christian High School and was previously employed as an administrative assistant at Hollywood Casino. Welcome, Wendy. John Ernstin here today. Nope. John was hired on August 24, 2017, as a firefighter. He was previously employed as a farmhand for Ernst and Dairy. Bryce Scott, is Bryce Scott here? Bryce was hired on August 24, 2017, as a firefighter. Sean Sivier? Sean was hired on August 24, 2017, as a firefighter. The firefighters must all be out tonight, huh? Tanya Washington? Tanya was hired on August 24, 2017, as an administrative clerk for the refuse garage department. Tanya graduated from Lansing High School and was previously employed as an assistant office manager at Wesley Property Management. William Corbett, Jr. here. Bill was hired on September 7, 2017, as an inspector, too, for the inspection department. Bill graduated from Pleasant Ridge High School and was previously employed as a business partner at CCI. Welcome. Jeff was hired on September 7, 2017, as a mechanic. He graduated from Shawnee Mission Northwest High School and was previously employed as a mechanic at Heartland Toe. Welcome to Leavenworth, sir.
Thank you.
Stephen Wexler? Stephen was hired on September 7, 17, as a police officer. Stephen graduated from King Park High School and was previously employed as a police officer for the Marion Police Department. Welcome to Leavenworth, sir.
Thank you.
And I think that is it. Next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of the previous meeting minutes. Any comments on the minutes, or do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, move to adopt the minutes from August 22, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinances. The first one is second consideration ordinance 8052, rezoning 801 North Broadway.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, this is the item regarding the rezoning of the Old Broadway School for the Loft Department project, and there have been no changes since the first consideration reading.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we need a roll call vote with this. Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
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 When, Mr. Camber, do you know when they're going to start the work on this building?
I don't.
Okay.
Next item, second consideration ordinance 8053, Uniform Public Offense Code 2017.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, for this item and the next two items, there have been no changes, and unless there are questions for them, they're ready to pass.
Any questions regarding this? If not, we need to do a roll call vote. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda, ordinance 8054, standard traffic ordinance, 2017.
Again, Madam Mayor, no changes, they're ready.
Okay. Any questions on this? If not, could I get a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
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 Second item, next item on the agenda, ordinance 8055, intersection traffic control devices, 2017. Any questions? If not, we need a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 All right.
Good job, Chief.
Again, we recruit everywhere, including Newport Ritchie.
That's good. All right. Second consideration ordinance 8056, repeal, Chapter 58, Human Relations.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, this is a follow-up on the Commission action some years ago that we never took out of the ordinance book, and as I mentioned last week, we are going to put some language on our website about where the public could direct their questions about fair housing laws, which is the Department of Justice.
Any other questions on this? If not, please begin the roll call vote with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance 8057, amend Chapter 42, Emergency Alarm Systems.
Carla Williamson will hand over this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is an amendment to Chapter 42, Emergency Services Alarm Systems. We amended a little bit of language in there just to clean that up a little bit and add another section for being able to hear this in municipal court. Other than that, there have been no changes.
Okay. Any questions? If not, please begin the roll call vote with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay. Next item on the agenda, citizen participation. Items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Are there any citizens? Please state your name and address, sir.
Mike Gould, 1054 10th Avenue. Over 60 days ago, I brought a bunch of properties to you because code enforcement wasn't dealing with them. I still have to report that a certain hunk of Shawnee between the fire station and the former railroad station has still overgrowth that they have not touched or dealt with. I would urge the City Commission to consider substantial cuts in code enforcement and zoning and planning, as they have been given resources and fail to deal with these issues.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next item on the agenda, request a waiver for the use of the Community Center for Shopping Event. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so sorry. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay. Now, if not hearing, hearing any, we'll move on then to the next item. Thank you. General items, request a waiver for the use of Community Center for Shopping Event.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is a request for a waiver to the Code of Ordinance for a transient merchant license for use of the Riverfront Community Center for ladies' shopping event. I believe they're calling it Shoppalooza. This was received by Kay Prescott. The event is to be held November 18, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The event will host approximately three direct selling companies that have homemade crafts and various other items. Ms. Prescott is aware that all vendors must have a Kansas retail sales tax number, and Ms. Prescott will provide the vendors with all tax forms to complete and return to the Department of Revenue if they don't have those. Ms. Prescott rented the community center on July 15 of this year for her first event. At that time, the community center inadvertently failed to mention to her that a waiver was required by the City Commission. Ms. Prescott has another fundraising event for September 28 at the Heritage Center. Per the ordinance, this would not qualify as an exemption to the transient merchant ordinance. And then Ms. Prescott was unaware of the requirement for the transient merchant license and that there was only one per six-month period. I know that they have already rented facilities, they've done a lot of advertising for these. She was not aware of this stipulation. The code does require that if any transient merchant sales are done on any city property, and specifically the community center, that the governing body has to grant those specific waivers. In addition, because she was not aware of the six-month provision, so there would be two things that the City Commission would want to look at, a waiver to allow more than one per six-month period, because there really would be three during the six-month period. So the Commission could grant that waiver for her to go ahead and have those, and then also if the Commission would want to allow her to have the November 18, and that would, because it's a community center specifically, grant that request. Ms. Prescott is here along with Jennifer Lemmons, so if you have any questions for them, or if they'd like to have any additional comments, they're here to.
How much is the license?
The license is $50 per day.
And how many days would she?
Up to five consecutive days, or I'm sorry, yeah, cannot exceed five days, and then you can only have one event per six-month period.
But she wants to.
Actually, it would be three. She's already had one in July, and then another one September 28 at the Heritage Center, and then the one in November that she's already booked.
Did this come down from misinformation in the clerk's office to not provide her with this information?
We were not aware of their event on the 15th that they had at the community center. I think the community center just inadvertently forgot to mention that the waiver was required, so therefore it didn't come to the City Commission, and it wasn't until the November event was booked that I believe Tammy Metzger, the, from the community center, then mentioned that, yeah, that it was required. And Tammy's here, if you have any questions regarding that also.
I think in this case, since they were not aware of it, and they were already doing the planning and all of that stuff, that we should go ahead and grant the waiver. That would be my suggestion, but I'll defer to the rest of the Commission as well.
Actually, looking at this many years ago, there was a lot of contention about having outside transient people competing with the brick-and-mortar businesses. As far as the fee waiver goes, because they do compete with those brick-and-mortar, and many communities do charge, you know, do charge fees, it's not that unusual, and to me, that's just an event coordinator's responsibility to kind of check that. Some communities do, and some communities don't. And I've been an event coordinator, so I can sympathize with you, and didn't get my fees waived either on that. But I honestly would like to really take a look at this as far as not being able to use the public spaces on that, because the community center is really one of our main venues on that. I know that they're looking at using another center here in town. By using, it's not eliminating their fee, but it's, you know, it's offering them the ability to come to the community, kind of compete with everybody else and use it. I don't know if I, if I still feel comfortable in support of the Commission. I would be opening up to, like, you know, including the parks and public places that they could hold these events for, if the Commission would be agreeable to maybe looking at that and having another public discussions on that, and even maybe looking at, you know, the restrictions on the six-month time period.
I think it's good to look at that, but I think in this case, right now, we ought to go ahead and move on this.
Yeah, oh, I'm not saying delay this or anything, I mean, because technically, I am really kind of for granting the waiver. There was maybe some communication here, you know, differences. I have no problem with that. We don't have the ability to waive the fee in the first place, which I really wouldn't, that wouldn't really sit very well with me, because I have no, outside of non-for-profits, like I said, that's just, you know, part of the event of making money and, you know, paying your sales tax and paying the designated fees to do business in a community, just like every other commercial business does. No, I mean, I'm for action, but I kind of like to see that we, you know, we look at this again.
Well, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Can I just clarify that the waiver, if the, if the Commission grants the waiver, it does not relieve them from the fee, they're still going to pay.
Right, yeah, I'm clear on that, yeah, yeah.
They will be allowed to do this.
Yeah, no.
Did you, did one of you want to say something, get up and say something? I see, I see you anxiously wanting to do that. Please state your name and address.
My name is Jennifer Lemmons, and thank you so much for visiting with us about this. A couple of different things, I sent you all an email late last week, I believe. We, I am a direct sales consultant for a company called Paparazzi Jewelry, and so I am part of one of the vendors that is going to be in this event, and I was in the last event that we had at the community center. And for me personally, I travel to everywhere outside of Leavenworth to do these events, because we don't have anything local. So I would love to talk to you guys and kind of understand this whole, why it's set up this way, because, I mean, I'm doing an event a week outside of my own hometown, and then obviously we weren't, we didn't know that this was a requirement, but, so I don't, I wasn't back when this, when this all took place and you guys created this requirement. So I would love to understand it, because as a direct salesperson, we don't have a brick-and-mortar, that's what we are, and so, but my product, yeah, there are other jewelers in town and things, but my product and my price point, I don't feel like I'm really competing with, but that's me specifically. I can see some other vendors may be competing with Lou's or one of those other places, too. So I would love to be part of the discussion or to understand it a little bit better, but I do appreciate you guys considering our events. Like I said, I go almost once a week. Last weekend, Saturday, Sunday, I was in Topeka at an event. This weekend, I'm in the Belvoir Winery. I don't even know where that's at off the top of my head.
Okay, so you're talking about your own business, but this event itself, 30 direct companies, so that's including your company, right?
Correct.
And homemade crafts, so are these local people that are in?
There are some local people, there are actually some brick-and-mortar people that are setting up a booth to talk about what they have to offer or an event coming up. But the majority, honestly, is direct salespeople. The majority of them are local, but there are some people from maybe Shawnee or that sell Lululemon, or, so there are some other vendors that aren't from our community, but the majority of them are, most, a lot of them are military spouses, that they do these kinds of things from home, they work these jobs from home. So I feel like, and obviously I'm a direct sales consultant, so, but I feel like it would be another great way to support, you know, the other, the other people that live in our town that do this kind of stuff, and not stepping on brick-and-mortar toes, because I love all the stores that I shop at here, too. So I just want to, I would just be interested to see why this was created, how, the cause and effect, and see if we can maybe change that a little bit, because there are no events for us direct salespeople to participate that are local, and there's a lot of us. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
An answer to your question.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest that you meet with our city clerk, Carla. She could explain all the reasons why and how we got there.
Okay.
I really don't want to discuss it again in the Commission.
I was just going to say something, maybe I will discuss a little bit, and I think if you look at any small to medium-sized city in the United States, and I don't know what population that defines, but I'd say every city has this type of ordinance, something like this. The purpose of it is, is to protect the people that are property taxpayers that have businesses in town. That's why they limit them. We do owe something to our local merchants who pay property taxes, employ people, et cetera. And so having an event once a year, once every six months, I think is very reasonable. And I understand direct sales, and I think that will, I don't know if we'll approve this waiver or not, but I think I'm in favor of approving it because of miscommunication. But your argument would also be, well, just because I'm direct sales, I don't have brick-and-mortar. Let's say I've got a whole toolbox, and I'm a heck of a mecant, and I'm not, by the way.
You have to know.
The Commission, it is. And let's say every Saturday or three times a year, he's going to set up down at the community center and says, come on down, I'll fix your car, you know, I'll pay the 50 bucks and I'll set up my own business. That's really taking a lot of business away from the other people that fix automobiles in this town. So I mean, it's the same thought, and, you know, you're direct sales, but.
Absolutely.
I mean, you could expand that to auto repair shops, and so there's a reason that this happens, and it does happen everywhere. And you just barely, you basically admitted it. Last week you went to Topeka, next week you go in here. Very seldom do you go to the same place twice in a short period of time. I would, I would submit to you probably not, unless it's a larger city, Overland Park.
It is large, yeah, you're correct.
You're not going to go to a small city weekend, a weekender, more than once or twice a year.
Okay.
That's why, that's kind of reasoning.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions on this?
Staff is recommending that we do grant this waiver on one-time basis.
I would say just because of, that she was not aware and there was some miscommunication.
Yes.
Is the director, or you?
Coordinator.
Coordinator, yeah.
Sorry.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about, about your event?
So our event, basically, like Jennifer was saying, we're direct sales, so we're not allowed to have a brick-and-mortar store. So we, I basically coordinate, set up an event, and ask people if they want to participate. There's a lot of military spouses, I'm a military spouse, a lot of local business ladies, but actually we have some people from Overland Park and Kansas City coming to our events. We did one in July, had a great turnout at the river, at the community center, and all the local people were very happy. It's like, why don't we have more of these? So, you know, it was a great event. We liked to support, as a military spouse, I like to support my local community, and I just felt that was a way to do my business out there and to support the local community. So that's kind of how it came about.
Okay, thank, what was your name again, ma'am?
Kay Prescott.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, we waive the, the.
Six-month limitation?
Six-month, thank you. Six-month limitation for this event, for the Shoppalooza, for this event, this event only. Second.
It's been a motion and second, please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you.
Do we need a second? Motion for the use of the community center?
Yeah. We can get a second one on that.
Is there a motion to use the community center?
What's?
Because the, every time you use the community center, even if it's once every six months, it has to be approved by the Commission.
Right, because.
Because it's the public building, that's how the ordinance is written.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we allow the use of the community center for the Shoppalooza event in, was it November?
Yeah.
November 2017.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, employee benefits plan renewal.
Oh, number 11.
One right before that.
Eleven.
I'm sorry, I skipped one, I already checked it off. Request for reduction in special assessments, 1220 Kingman.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Commissioner, we had a request from Jeremy Hawes. He lives at 1221 Kingman Street, and he is considering the purchase of the property across the street from him at 1220 Kingman. That property currently has some special assessment fees on it, the city has been mowing that for the last couple of years. It is, the property is available for sale from the county, it's been from the county tax sale, and there were no, no bidders, but the county does leave those open, so if anybody wants to place a bid on it directly with them, they can. So this property falls into that category. The taxes that are currently on the property are the 2016 taxes, I'm sorry, the special assessments on the 2016 taxes, they are in the total of $2,470.76. The 2017 taxes, those will have $1,944.84 assessed to them from mowing and nuisance fees, and then there are some other fees that have been assessed, that have, where the city has done some mowing, but we haven't assessed those, those fees yet, and those total $1,041.48. As the Commission knows, those fees are the cost, the actual cost of the mowing, and then those administrative fees that get put on there, those are progressive, depending on the number of mowings that are done. In the past, when the City Commission has reviewed these requests, what the Commission has approved is the actual cost of the mowing and then a $100 administrative fee for each for each assessment period. So if the commission were to follow that same protocol that they've done in the past, then this would reduce the fees down to two hundred and fifty seven dollars and eight cents, which is the cost of the actual mowings of those, of the property, and then three hundred dollars for the administrative fee for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and then the current year. Mr. Hawes is here to address the commission, if you have any questions as far as what, you know, what his plans for the property or any other questions you might have from him, or if he has any additional comments.
I just have a question, because I didn't have a chance to go by to see the property. Is, is this just a vacant lot? Is there a structure on the property?
There's no, there's currently no property, nothing on the property. It's been vacant for about ten years.
Okay.
City's been taking care of it since the demolition, I think it was in two thousand eight. It's an ice ore.
Okay.
And I just want to be able to maintain it.
So you're just gonna kind of incorporate it as part of your yard there?
But I have the property across the street, and...
Oh, okay.
So it's...
No, it wouldn't be part of your yard then if you're across the street, yeah, yeah.
For, for the record, what is your name, sir?
Jeremy Hawes.
Okay, I'm sorry, you just said that already. Just want to make sure.
Ms. Williamson or Mr. Hawes, do you know the condition of the property right now? Does it need mowing? If I had to go out there tonight?
Yeah, it needs to be mowed.
How big a lot is it?
It's forty five foot wide, I'm not sure the depth.
Yeah.
It's too small to develop, so...
Yes, it is too, it's not a buildable lot, and we did talk to code enforcement, knowing that he was coming to address the city commission, so they did hold off on another mowing, just so there wasn't another fee on there, just in case you wouldn't approve it, then that just isn't gonna build up more fees.
And this comes up for sheriff sale when next week?
I'm not sure.
It was on the sheriff's sale last December, and I think it's probably been on for the last couple of years, and there've been no bidders. So the county just kind of keeps those open, so that if anybody is interested, they don't have to wait till the next sale, they can go in and make a, an offer independently on those, and that's what Mr. Hawes has done.
Okay.
And if he does make an offer to the county, what's the process? If he goes in, kind of puts off tomorrow, says, I'll give you a hundred, but, you know, whatever, I have no, and makes no difference what he gives for it. Now, what's the process for the county? When could they transfer it?
You know, I'm not sure of all of their, what they have to do. Typically, when we purchase things from the tax sale, as soon as he makes the transfer, it's, it just takes some time for them to get the deed to him. Typically, three weeks, something like that. But that's just to get the formal deed. He would have to go through and pay any of the assessments, pay the taxes, and that would have to be done before they do the process of actually signing off on that deed. It probably takes a little longer during the tax sale, because they've got so many they're processing. Probably these one offs like that would probably, I'm, again, I don't know their process, but I would say a couple of weeks.
What's your plans, Mr. Hawes?
Currently, I just want to maintain it. I probably might put a garden in.
No, I mean, what's your plans on purchasing it? I mean, like tomorrow, are you going to the courthouse, or?
Is, if everything goes the accordingly here, yes. I'm, I'm ready to move on it.
Yeah, he, he has been speaking with the, the county on it, so they were just kind of waiting to make sure that if, if this city commission was going to grant the, the reduction or not, that was kind of contingent upon whether he went ahead and went through with the purchase, right?
How tall is the grass right now, Mr. Hawes?
I believe it's about two and a half foot. Part of it was moved about three weeks ago.
It was moved three weeks ago by, by the homeownership. If we had granted this tonight, would you mow that grass tomorrow, or within the next couple of days?
He hasn't mowed it yet.
I can promise you before the end of this week.
No, 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 but here's the reason I'm asking. If I don't want to grant this, then walks out and we've got taxes off. And I'm not asking you to make a good faith measure, but if we grant this, I would either, if that's not mowed by this weekend, I'd expect code enforcement to hire somebody to put it out there to mow with the assessment on, with the payment on it too. Because obviously, it's an ice ore for you, but it's an ice ore for the whole neighborhood. So that's why I'm asking. If we would grant this, would you take care of mowing that in the next couple of days, even though the process with the county hasn't gone through yet?
I'm prepared to do that.
You would what?
I said I am prepared to do that.
I didn't hear him, I saw what he said.
Yes.
Oh, prepared, okay, okay.
Yes, he's prepared to do that.
The last time the city...
Does that mean you are going to do that if we approve this?
Yes, sir.
The last time the city mowed it was August twenty first.
What if he doesn't get the property?
Well, then we're gonna get the, we need to mow that lawn. I mean, we held off mowing the lawn, it's, you know, it's past the point, it should be mowed, but we're doing this, we're trying to work together, we want to make sure, you know? He's got some skin on the game too. Okay, you have any questions to ask?
I don't believe so.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other questions on this, or what are your thoughts, commissioners?
No, I'd, I'd be willing to do the, the reduction on that and give him some time to get out there and have the process work its way through.
I agree.
I, you know, based on my questioning, I'm definitely in favor of giving Mr. Hawes the reduction on this with the stipulation that by next Monday, which would be like the eighteenth, that, that the grass is mowed, otherwise we have to get code enforcement out there to do it.
You'll make that a motion?
Is that a motion?
And, and so I will, and I will move that.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 That passed unanimously, thank you, sir.
Good luck, Mr. Hawes.
We'll, we'll be driving by.
Grow some tomatoes next year.
Okay. Now, next item on the agenda is the employee benefit plan renewal.
Lana, you can sit at the table if you want. You want to stand up? Lana, enter HR Director here.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, presented for your review and approval this evening is the renewal for our employee benefit coverages, which will begin with our new plan year on December first, two thousand seventeen. As outlined in the policy report, presented is recommendation for renewal with all of our current carriers, United Healthcare for our medical, Delta Dental for our dental, and VSP for our vision coverage. All three of those plans, again, would renew to effective December one. Delta and VSP both gave us a flat renewal, so no increase in our rates this year. And after working with United, going back and forth a couple of times, and after consultation with employee counsel and getting feedback and thoughts from employees on the consensus to stay with United, making slight plan design changes to stay within our budget or to send it out to market, consensus was to stay with United. So in working with United, we were able to do a slight plan design change and maintain under budget from what we had originally posted. And that slight plan design change is in regards to the prescription plan. That is the same across all three tiers. We currently have three different levels of coverage, but the prescription plan is the same across all three. And currently, it's a three tier plan with a twelve thirty fifty co-pay, and it will change to a fifteen thirty five seventy co-pay for the tier one, two, and three drugs. And looking at, and we did some analysis on how many people were affected by the tier three drugs, there were roughly twenty five employees that had tier three drugs. Of those, there are generics available that would cost them less money if they switched over. So we did do the analysis to look at impact to employees as well in that. The renewal with that benefit change came in at seven point eight six percent. We budgeted at ten percent, so well under what are, what we had budgeted with as minimal impact as we can to the employees. Again, city renewed with Delta last year. In addition to the no increase this year, they also gave us a five percent rate cap for the next two years going forward. And this will be the second year of our two-year contract with VSP, so next year we'll start another two-year agreement if we continue with them. The additional benefit that's outlined is our flex spending account, which we have been with Aflac or an agent of Aflac for at least the last ten years. WageWorks took over for Aflac Flex One roughly about five years ago. They gave us a rate guarantee for three years when they took that over from Aflac, and over the last two years, we have seen fairly significant increases. As a result of that, we did decide to bid out for that service for our flex spending accounts and receive bids back from three different agencies. One of those being Infineosource, which we currently do utilize for our Cobra administration. All three of the carriers provided similar services as well as similar rates. However, Infineosource was the only one to guarantee us a lifetime rate without any changes or increases. So recommending approval to switch from WageWorks to Infineosource for unreimbursed medical as well as dependent daycare accounts. The change with that to allow for the transition from providers, that plan year would change to a January one, which would give us the month of December to close out the WageWork account, and then switch over to Infineosource for a January one effective date.
On the compensation study that you're asking also to approve for that, what is that gonna entail and then, and then the cost on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that overview, and then Lana can give you some details. In the budget letter this year, we mentioned a three percent increase, but that there was a, a real need to do a compensation study. Our last full compensation study, I believe, was in nineteen ninety nine. And this isn't a salary rate study where we look at the ranges. This is an actual, where they get into the job descriptions of employees, into a comparison globally, position by position. So it's something we haven't done in a long time. We used to do a lot of this stuff through cooperative efforts with Mark, they don't do that anymore. So it's just something we haven't done in a long time. We didn't budget it, because there was no way to fit it in this year without cutting something else or, or affecting the mill rate. When these rates did come in, how, how they came in, we looked at that savings that was set aside for employee compensation as possibly a way to get that compensation plan funded next year. It will be below the savings. The savings, I think, were around the sixty six thousand dollar range from the ten percent budgeted health to seven point eight percent. So we're looking in the, maybe the forty, fifty thousand dollar range, but we're gonna get quotes and we'll bid it out. So we're just looking for the, the authority from the commission to be able to do that with those savings.
Quick question on vision coverage. Does every employee have vision coverage or is that just one they jock in on?
That is, yes. All three of the plans are standalone plans, so they can elect to have coverage for medical, dental, and vision, all as separate. So no, not everyone opts for it.
Okay, cool, okay, thank you.
I'm just amazed at what the insurance companies have been able to get away with all these years. It doesn't matter whether the economy goes up or down, the rates always go up. And the pharmaceuticals are, pharmaceuticals are highway, highway robbery and they should be stopped. That's just my editorial comment, but I, we'll move on, sorry.
Oh, keep going, keep going. All they have, they gotta pay for the advertising.
Well, the advertising and all the drugs they give away to the doctors to get, advertising's ridiculous.
Two countries in the world allow drug advertising on TV. U.S. and New Zealand, two highest drug costs.
Okay.
That's beside the point.
Get off of that. That's a national, that's a national problem. I'm ready for a motion, Ms....
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we improve the employee benefits plan as recommended in the staff's presentation, and also to include covering the budget savings for the comprehensive study.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Resolution B twenty one seventy six, support Folsom Housing Group for Hillcrest Manor.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, you will be hearing this item as the Leavenworth Public Housing Board. This is a resolution of support for an application to the Kansas Housing Resources Corp. for low-income housing tax credits. We do this probably about twice a year. It's the first one in my recent memory that's for a renovation rather than a new building. The Pioneer Group got a low-income housing tax credit last year for the VA project, one in Baser was successful a couple of years before. This is the Hillcrest Manor Properties, which is on Hughes Road behind the old Leavenworth Plaza. We've been working with this group for many months about this project, and I think they're ready to get started, submit their application. They're looking at a four million dollar renovation, a total renovation of that property, and I think it's much needed. They do have a representative here tonight, Terrell Davis, who would like to give you maybe a couple of minute overview of the project and what they want to do. And the staff is in support of the resolution of support to the, for the tax credits.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, good evening. As you stated, my name's Terrell Davis, I'm with the Folsom Housing Group. And our group, we specialize in light tech developments, and I believe the city manager will have shortly some handouts she can get, get you all later to kind of see what we, we do. It also has the narrative of the project and a little bit of the scope of working there as well. But to give you a little backstory on, on this project, the, it was originally developed in nineteen eighty-two by the use of HUD two oh two loan program. So it's ninety-five units of senior, senior housing, a hundred percent assisted by HUD, which is extremely important, as we know, to our senior population who operates on fixed, fixed incomes, thus the need to, you know, preserve the, preserve the housing. So as, as, as we mentioned, it's, it's a light tech proposal, four percent proposal. And I should mention, what's good about it being a four percent proposal is that it's not a part of the competitive round like the nine percent credits are. So we've been, had a lot of conversation with KHRC, and they're ready, they're ready to go on it. It just, we're looking for, we're looking for support. So with that being said, the, the renovation cost, and the city manager spoke on that a little bit, but it's about thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars a unit, just to speak on the renovation itself, the scope of work. Basically, it's a tear out, put back, we'll replace cabinets, countertops, appliances, flooring, doors, hardware, things like that. And if some drywall needs to come off, we'll, we'll do that too. So leading up to the, to the renovation, we do have a bidding process, and I like to mention that we, we know that it's extremely important for the local workforce to have opportunity to, to be awarded contracts. So we will advertise in the local papers and any other city advertisement deals you may have. So, so with that, with that being said, we, we've spoken with the residents, they, they really looking to get this project done. They've been promised this multiple times by a previous partner, and they're, you know, just not, not, you know, we heard this story before, so...
Yeah, they don't believe it. I, I know, I go to, visit, I work for a home care agency, I go and visit, there are always the residents there.
Yeah, so...
They're nice buildings, but they do need, they do need some work. They need updating. They're, they're clean and they're, they're well managed, but they need, need to be updated, yeah.
Do you currently, are there currently ninety-five residents on site?
Ninety-five residents on site? There's ninety-five units.
There's ninety-five units, okay.
Yeah, there's ninety-five units, I'm not sure if it's a hundred percent occupied. It's, I believe it's about ninety-two, so it's a little ninety-two booster field, if that's what you're asking.
So, and then how, because the residents are staying there, and how are you working around?
So we have a relocation plan, and we would have to move some of the tenants off-site, which we try to get, get around that. So, but they will be moved off-site and, you know, compensated for that, obviously. But in, in this particular case, we're not able to move them around the building, or move them around the, the property for the renovation, unfortunately.
Because it's a full, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's, yeah, I just kind of want to fully understand the logistics there.
Yeah, it gets, it gets a little complicated, they, they get a little bit uncomfortable and even upset at times, but when the renovation's over, everyone's happy, so...
Okay.
So anyways, that's pretty much all I have, but we certainly would, would appreciate your support in the project, and we look forward to getting, getting this thing going. So, thank you.
I wanted to also mention that there, if they're successful with their tax credit application, there is a plan that they would come back to the city for potentially some industrial revenue bond, and we'll run it through our, our equation and give you what we believe the incentive would be, and that is, that's allowable in industrial revenue bonds for renovations. So that will come back to you at some point.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
No, no, yep, can save those for, I, it, they are needed. I mean, it is a nice, nice facility out there, but, you know, I'm sure it's got the wear and tear of just being dated too.
Yeah, the managers, they've done a pretty good job of working with what they have to keep it going, so...
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming. If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the Resolution B twenty one seventy-six to support the Folsom Housing Group for Hillcrest Manor.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, amending chapter 54, Article 3, food.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is an item that staff has discussed with the commission at the August 1 and September 5 study sessions. This was a section of the Code of Ordinances that just needed to be defined a little bit better, and we've done some work on it to define mobile food vending, temporary vendors, and ice cream vendors. At our discussion at last week's study session, staff did prepare a sample ordinance for first consideration with some of the items that we talked about, and some of the items that the commission wanted to amend. I would call your attention to page 44 of the packet, which starts the operating conditions, and then on page 45, specifically item C on there, I know there was a little bit of discussion on there about mobile food vendors shall not operate within a certain distance from a brick-and-mortar restaurant with their posted hours, and we've talked a little bit about perhaps 100 feet, maybe 150 feet, so I don't know if the commission wanted to...
Let's start somewhere, and work from there.
So if you...
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I just put 100 feet in there as kind of a placeholder, but we could do 150 feet, whatever the commission would like to, to look at.
Yeah. My concern was that it wouldn't block the brick-and-mortar, so the closer the proximity without the permission, I think that, to me, that's going to cover it, not...
Yeah, and last week, just because we weren't all here last week, or, yeah, whenever that was, we, we studied several different ordinances in different communities, so you've probably read it all.
I watched it, and I watched it.
Oh, good. You can get it over there where you work.
Long gone, good job.
Okay, okay.
How long has it been?
So would the commission like to, to stay with 100 feet, as anyone will?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's good.
And then the other item was item F. I went ahead and left in there that mobile food vendor shall not locate on any public property or park without obtaining permission from the city. I know the commission was not in favor of any, just vending in any of those areas, but I did put in there with permission, because there may be some situations that there may want to be some kind of a waiver or something, and I can put in there that that, that permission would come from the city manager, or the city commission, however you'd like to word that.
To me, for expedience, yeah, I think it should be the city manager, I mean, you know, do you have somebody wait a week to get an answer, yea or nay? I think that's a bit...
I remember years ago, Hawthorne Park, there was a guy, Max.
Yeah.
Max, he was running a hot dog truck, and he's having their softball, kids' baseball nights, you know, great service for the people that wanted a hot dog, and I don't know if he got approval or not, yes, please.
Okay, so I will put that in there before it comes back for second consideration. And then, just going back to review the fees that we discussed, the temporary food service permit would be listed at no more than three consecutive days per special event for $10, and then the inspection fee, so if a vendor did not have a state license or permit, then there would be an additional $25 for the city inspectors to go out and do that additional inspection. The ice cream vendor license, we would just mirror what a mobile food vendor is at $60. And then the reciprocal food handler permit, that's, as long as somebody can bring us proof that they have completed a, a class of equal requirement, then we just issue them a permit from the city for a dollar, is all that we've done in the past, so we'll just keep that. When this does come back for second consideration, the commission can also approve the associated fees. We do a review of all the fees once a year, and actually put that into Appendix F, but we can go ahead and approve those fees, and then they'll be in place, and then later we'll just come back and formally put those into Appendix F, so...
Okay.
You have any other questions, I can answer them for you?
Inspections are still handled, are handled by the fire department, are they not?
They are.
So they, one of the firefighters has an additional duty of, I want all the food, food laws, et cetera, or...
Well, we have health and safety inspector, specifically.
Specifically for that. In addition to being a firefighter, is that an additional duty?
No, it's, it's in...
Add in Captain Kell and Miranda, we have two guys that can do it. Okay, but they're also firefighters, if necessary, too.
No, they're not on a truck.
No, they're in a major emergency. I mean, they are trained firefighters.
Yeah, 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 yeah. They have been, they have fought fires in their career. They wear white shirts, though.
The chief is here, if you want to ask him, he's here.
I was waiting for him to say, he's the city manager to answer it all.
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or issues with consideration? If not, is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, consent agenda.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to move for your approval claims for August 19, 2017, through September 8, 2017, in the amount of $1,630,162.51. The net amount for pay number 18, effective September 1, 2017, in the amount of $307,108.91, with no fire and police pension at this time.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, to approve the consent agenda, please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Any other items I'd like to bring for the commission tonight? I would like to say the community had a prayer event last night for 9/11, it was in front of City Hall here. There were several churches in our community coming together, and it really was a very warm and moving event, and a lot of discussion about, about different groups and people in our community being able to work together, and I think it, it's, you know, is reflective of, of the goodness of our community that, that I love here, and, and I just wanted to recognize them for what a great event that was, so...
Okay.
Anyway, anything else? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting, Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.